But good evening and welcome to tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board. Today is Tuesday, February 18th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Agenda items may be taken out of order at the discretion of the Chair. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Are there any public comments from the Board?
Hold on, I'm waiting for PAC to join Zoom here. They had an issue before and I'm... Yep, I see that. Just do the same thing, just grab that ID number.
So the way this one is drafted, if it's not the board's signature?
Yep. I was gonna ask if you wanted to switch it over.
Join at the bottom, John. All the way at the bottom says, "Join on your browser."
This meeting is being recorded.
All right, great. Welcome to Zoom. All right. Any public comments from the Board?
I do. I just wanted to announce, so I've been missed last week, but the, and I just checked, it's not even listed, but the Town Caucus for nominees is Monday, March 10th. And in order to give people enough time, first of all, there's lots of seats, and I encourage people to run for all the elected seats that are available. And giving people the most amount of time, I wanted to announce that I will not be running for reelection this year. So if you are interested in a Select Board seat, not that you couldn't have run against me, you certainly could have, but I will not be running, and I hope there are candidates coming forward who are willing to take that seat. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any public comments from the public? Glenn?
Good to see you.
Glenn McLeod, 436 Reservoir Road. Just in light of the agenda item relative to the Municipal Building Design Committee update, one of the things that I'd appreciate hearing more about now and in the future is just my perspective, that it just seems that if Lunenburg was a property management company, that they'd probably be out of business or certainly not have any more clients. So just that kind of, you know, with all the existing buildings and issues, it would just be nice to hear that in context. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Glenn. All right, no one else in the room? I see concerned residents here with their hand raised on Zoom. I will remind you, though, concerned residents, that you will have to state your name and address at the beginning of your public comment.
Yes, George Burden, 39 Cortland Circle. Wanted to raise a couple of concerns, and that's why I put that name there. The first concern I want to raise is I, was I wanted to join the Finance Committee. I had a meeting tonight at 6:15 supposedly. I was not sent the Zoom details, so I could not attend the meeting. It seemed a little odd. You know, we were looking for individuals to volunteer. I raised my hand to volunteer and not able to. It was very hard, honestly, to get the application originally and even to get the meeting originally going. So I find it very odd. We know what's going on with myself in town, a lot of residents do. Very much concerns with my family. Couple of those things are records requests. We've seen, we've heard about an article in the newspaper, resident being called "The Burdens." You know, it's a one-sided story. Why doesn't someone call us and ask us why we're raising these concerns? Doesn't tell that side of the story, and a lot of the facts actually about the appeals that are being done at the state level are inaccurate. Six months of asking for an appeal of a document request, for six months it has not been, and the Lunenburg is in violations of these violations of a public records request. I just want to mention one of them. PACC, the Public Access Cable Committee. I started digging into it a little bit and looking at expenses. I came across, and I've asked for expenses of a specific company that we pay bills to, of a company in New York that has violations of human rights. Why? Those are the kind of things that I'm digging into, the residents of Lunenburg. So if you want to know, that's the reason why I'm digging into things. Doesn't seem right to me why we would do business in a town of, in a state of New York. Why? And it has a human rights violation. Doesn't make sense to me. One other concern I want to raise, we got a letter from a concerned resident that is trying to make discourse in this town between myself, my family, and the residents of Hickory Hills. And I'll tell you why. It was a letter that they're trying to pit my family up against those residents because we tried to look out for those residents. The taxes that were raised, 110%, and my taxes went down 33%. My value of my home went down $475,000, down to $175,000. Tell me how that happened. Tell me. I don't understand it. These are the concerns we've raised, and ever since then, I've been attacked like no tomorrow. It's unbelievable. But it was a letter sent to us that talks about some tree trimming in town, and I raised a concern about, we got charged $1,800 in our HOA that we can't even see a bill of. It seemed very odd, and then all of a sudden I get a letter and say, "Why don't you bring this concern up to the town?" You know why they want me to bring it up? So those residents will get pissed at me. It's really unbelievable what this town will do to cause a discourse between residents. Why don't we have a nice community and get back to where Lunenburg should be? I'm gonna leave it at that for now, and I'll be back next week.
Thank you, Mr. Burden. Are there any other public comments from the public? All right, seeing none, moving on to announcements. We already covered that. I was gonna mention the caucus, communications from other boards. Don't see any, and I don't have any either. So we'll move down to appointments, ratifications, and resignations. We have the resignation of John E. Baker as Constable, effective May 2025. So I will read his letter that we received. "To the Select Board of Lunenburg, from Constable John E. Baker. I have been in the service of the town of Lunenburg since 1969. The last 30-plus years as your Constable. At 82 years old, it is time for some young blood to fill this position. It has been my honor to have served this town all these years. My term ends May of 2025. Respectfully, John E. Baker."
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I would like to personally thank Mr. Baker for all those years. I know John throughout my years of service here. I know his service with the, you know, the police force, starting with the police force, and then through a number of, a number of other committees that he was on, but most notably, of course, for the last 25, 30 years with the constables. Really loves this town, really has done a lot for the town in serving, so I want to thank him. And yes, you've certainly earned it at age 82, John, so I wish you the best.
All right, thank you. I also want to thank Mr. Baker for his decades of service to the town, and I want to remind folks at home that the Constable is an elected position that will be on the ballot this May. The Constable is primarily responsible for posting the town meeting and election warrants, and if you're interested in getting on the ballot, you can attend the Citizens Party Caucus. All right. Moving on to the Town Manager Report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have some project updates for you. The library teen room has now been completed. There's still a little bit of work to do, but now they will begin the next phase for the library's director's office once the library director physically moves out. Town Hall chimney roof and replacement, chimney and roof replacement obviously has continued to be delayed by the weather. We did put out a invitation for bids for our cleaning services that will be closing on March 6th. We are looking to align this contract, in this contract, we're looking to align it with the fiscal year, so it's not quite a full three, it's two and change, but it'll get us on the fiscal year cycle. And lastly, the town has entered into a contract with Beta Group, which is an engineering firm for design and engineering work, to work on sidewalk plans at Northfield Road, Highland Street, and Chestnut Streets, specifically looking at the sidewalks and ramp replacements. These are items that were identified in the 2020 ADA Transition Plan. This contract concludes with complete construction documents, so it will be bid-ready and is in the sum of $119,000 funded by Chapter 90. Some general updates for the Board. I am thrilled to announce that the Division of Local Services has informed the town that the Schedule A for FY '24 has been processed and approved. For this, essentially, for those that don't know, this closes out our books on FY '24, and the Schedule A is a statement of revenues, expenditures, and other financing sources, and it's essentially the town's final balance sheet. So thank you so much to our Finance Director, Ezekiel Ayala, and the entire finance team for getting this closed out. A little bit more accolades. As everybody is aware, we had quite the long-duration winter storm. This was a very difficult storm as we had the snow, followed by the severe icing. Our public work crews put in 33 hours straight in maintaining the roads. So I know sometimes when the crews do need to get off the roads, the condition for rest, of course, the conditions can deteriorate some, and so we thank residents for staying off the roads and their patience while we allowed the crews to do the work. I do want to say, there was some concern about icing and potential for power outage. Chief Sullivan was in pretty regular communication about the status over the weekend, and keeping me apprised of what that, what transpired there. Congresswoman Trey Hand held a municipal leaders conference this morning to discuss the potential impact of federal action on municipalities in the district. I logged on. Not much there that hasn't been reported on news, but I'm happy for the engagement, and I know that we'll be able to find out what potential impacts, if any, may address us as we proceed. I am holding my first department head meeting tomorrow morning with department heads. I do plan to hold department heads' meetings at the frequency of about one month, one per month to start, and will assess that time period after a few months. Amongst other updates, I am going to be asking the staff to review, if they have not already done so, the Municipal Building Design Committee report and that video. There was a request for staff to provide feedback, so I know that a lot of feedback has been provided during the process, but to the extent that folks want to provide additional feedback, we're asking for them to come before the Board or send it to me, and I'll compile it for that March 1st, the first meeting, March, March 4th. I met with the Public Safety Team today for the first time, leaving this building, getting out from my office. So I had very long meetings with both chiefs. So that was great, got a tour of the buildings. I will also, the Facilities Director, Assistant Town Manager, and I are going to resume the weekly meetings that were being held with the former interim Town Manager. I think that was a great process that started, so we'll be keeping that up. And tomorrow, I am going to Ritter to meet with the land use. So getting out of the building, finally. So I'm thrilled about that. And then the last item on general updates is I am considering holding a staff engagement event on March 17th for maximum participation. I would like to close the resident-facing offices for two to three hours, but prior to moving forward, I don't know what customs and traditions are, so I wanted to get input from the Board on such a thing, either tonight or following this meeting. So it's a little bit of a staff engagement event, it's a little bit of a time for feedback, and I know that staff development is something that the Board's looking towards doing, so. Current vacancies. We still have the Assistant to the Sewer Business Manager position. Tentative offer was made this week. Little bit of an update on the Police Chief. There were a total of 17 applicants that submitted applications. The screening panel has been asked to evaluate the 17 applicants based on their minimum qualifications and completeness, and so we'll be going forward. Screening Committee is going to meet a couple of times, and then the first round of interviews will be in early March. We have seasonal positions of a lifeguard up to 40 hours per week, and beach director, also up to 40 hours per week if folks are looking for something to do in the summer and have some time, that would be great. And the, the Board vacancies, we know that Finance Committee Screening Committee met earlier tonight, so hopefully we'll, we'll not have two vacancies on
No vacancies after tonight.
After tonight, and excellent, and as we go into this process. But there remain vacancies on a number of other Boards, Committees, Commissions. As always, if folks are interested in learning more about those Boards, feel free to reach out. And that concludes my report for tonight.
All right. Thank you, Jen, and I will just say, I fully support you closing the offices for a couple hours for a staff engagement event.
I concur.
All right.
Agree.
Okay.
I figured that would be the case. Any other questions for Jen?
I just want to acknowledge the amount of work that obviously has gone into the last week or so of you being on the job. So I just want to just acknowledge that. I think that, you know, what you've presented here with the staffing is a really great idea. So I don't have any questions. I just want to comment that I think that all of this seems to be moving in the right direction.
All right. Let's move on to old business, then. Up next, Sell or Hold, 56 Carr Avenue. Where are we at on this? Do members need any more information?
My understanding from last time is that we did, we are not actively seeking foreclosure. That is my understanding.
It was filed for, but...
So to clarify, we filed the foreclosure action, but we haven't filed the motion for general default. So nothing happens now until that motion is filed.
Right. So I, I don't see any need to have to do any action anytime soon. I'd like, I certainly, if we're gonna start the clock, which I'm not committed to, but if we were, I don't want it to be under seven inches of ice to do an assessment of a property. I would like to do it when, when there's no snow. So if we can put this off till the spring, then we can at least assess it. That would be my feeling.
So can I ask, do I understand correctly, once we file the motion and decision comes down, then the clock starts? We have two weeks to decide whether to hold or sell, is that right?
Once we receive the decision, yes.
Right. Two weeks from the decision.
That's when the clock starts.
Two weeks is pretty short.
Yeah, totally. So we really should have to have a decision before.
I don't know how long it takes for a decision to come down, once you...
Yeah, that's actually a good question, because I mean, Land Courts, what I hear is three to four years right now to make decisions. So what are you hearing?
On tax title?
No, but I don't know about this. Like, what are you hearing for this?
So, hold on just a moment.
If I remember correctly, it's like six to nine months.
Let me pull up an email that I have from our tax title attorney. Hold on just a moment.
But broadly, Mr. Chair, I agree with Mr. Alonso, that it's, it's really difficult to do an assessment of property this time of the year.
Yeah.
It seems like we need eyes on, which is no snow and, you know.
And no mud.
So we have a window of two weeks now. No snow, no ice.
So, Mr. Chairman, I did find the email. So the, this is a quote from the, from Tax Title Council. "The court will generally take four to eight weeks from the motion being filed to issue the judgment, but it could take longer. Once the judgment issues is when the clock starts ticking, and that's when we must notify the owners within 44 days." So it's the 30 days plus the 14 of our decision to sell or retain by certified mail.
Right. Okay.
All right. So do we just want to table this?
Yep.
Until the spring?
Yep.
Okay.
That's what I, my recommendation would be.
Yeah. I would also recommend that maybe we target first meeting in April or something.
And I'm hearing folks wanting to look at the property. Would we want to do that as a, we can, there is a way that we can have a meeting where you're in a meeting out at the site?
Mm-hmm.
Or you can do it on your own, and then you can view the site on your own, but...
I'm not really, I'm not concerned about me particularly seeing the site. I've seen the site in the past. I'm interested about appraisers.
Appraisers, yeah, same. All right, all right. Sounds like we made a decision, then. All right. Up next, Review Draft of Cannabis Control Commission Host Community Agreement for Bliss Cannabis. Any remaining questions or concerns on that at this point?
No.
I have none.
All right.
I'm, I'm looking through the agreement. You know, I, I think I've been clear in vocalizing my concern as it's come out, not from the organization, but from the guidance that we've received from the state as it refers to some of the hiring practices that they need to engage in. You know, I understand the intent behind some of that, I just don't agree with the language. So I certainly support Bliss Cannabis coming into our community and being able to operate. I'm gonna have a, I don't see myself signing off on this agreement because I really don't like the language, but I'm not opposed to them having a business, and I understand that this is a necessary part of having a business. So I'm kind of in a position where I feel a little conflicted because I'm depending upon my colleagues to vote yes, but at the same time, it kind of means that I should vote yes. But I, again, I really don't like the language that's in there. But I don't otherwise have an issue with what's here, and I do support us kind of moving forward with it.
One thing I did want to ask, Jen, do you want us to change this out? So instead of the duly authorized representative as Carter, do you want it to be you?
Yeah.
Do we have to?
So you don't have to, I will make that change in the document. The one thing is, if there is going to be a motion tonight, that within that motion, you're authorizing the Town Manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the Board.
Gotcha. All right. Is there any other discussion, or are we authorizing the Town Manager to, how did you word it again?
Execute the agreement on...
Execute the agreement.
With Uma Flowers Lunenburg on behalf of the Select Board.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Yeah. Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
The motion passes three to one. All right, what's next? Workplace Climate Survey Policy. So we've had the redlined version for a couple of weeks now. Same thing. Any questions or concerns at this point? Do we want to review it, or have members already reviewed it?
This is, the redlined version is what we talked about, right?
Yep. Where is it? Oh, here it is.
I have reviewed it, that that is what we talked about, to the best of my recollection.
I trust the word merge versions.
I think we just have to identify where it's gonna fit.
In our policies?
Yes. Do we have a potential number for this?
I did have that noted at some point, but it's been two months, and I forgot, and I don't have it on me right now.
All right. We can look real quick.
Yeah.
Probably 2.19.
That's, yes, it's two-something, I don't know. I don't think it's 19, though. I think it's a little lower than that.
So I think this would fall under an operational policy?
Yeah.
And so that would be 2.13.
Right. All right. Any disagreement to that?
I'm fine with that.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the policy?
Sure. I move to approve the Workplace Climate Survey Policy to be identified as Section 2.13 of the Select Board Policies and Procedures.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes unanimously.
You know, just one comment. This highlights, again, we really need to get the Personnel Committee in place.
Yeah.
This has been vacant for far too long. And I don't know how...
It was coming up on like eight months now.
Right after town meet, special town meeting, right?
Was it?
Presented, didn't they present the SAP?
Was it after this special town meeting, or was it after annual town meeting?
No, you're talking about annual town meeting.
Yeah, annual town meeting.
Oh, yeah, so it's almost a year. It's even longer.
That's what I'm saying. It's like eight months, nine months.
I agree. I've tried. I've talked to several people in town with HR experience, and I think the biggest challenge, too, is just getting it off the ground again. The fact that there's no one on it.
Right, to go from zero.
If there was one vacancy, you know, maybe it would be a little harder to fill. Starting from zero is just incredibly challenging.
So one person volunteers, nothing can happen. You sit and wait for a second person, and then finally, until you get three, a quorum. I don't know if there's any...
There was a person who, who withdrew their application for the FinCom for tonight, but on that volunteer form, they indicated Personnel Committee was their first choice. So hopefully, that person will get whatever needs to be sorted, sorted, and can volunteer for that.
And bring four people along with them.
Let's start with one.
The other, while HR professionals, of course, are great on that committee, the other kind of natural group of folks are retirees from either this municipality or that have worked in other municipalities, because they've seen how it functions well, and they've seen when it doesn't function well. They have a really good perspective.
So if you're, if that's you and you're watching this, please volunteer for the Personnel Committee. All right. What's up next? Discussion on Select Board and Town Manager Goal Setting Process. We'll pick that up in March. Review and Discussion on Budget Task Force Recommendations. So we were looking to pick this back up with full board, which we don't have tonight. So unless there's any discussion on this, then I'm fine with tabling it.
Mr. Chair, do you remember, there was something that, and I don't, I just don't recall, but last week, I think we had wanted, no, no, we had asked Select and MP what the question was.
Yeah, it was the audit.
Yeah.
Oh, the audit, yeah.
So never mind. I think, nope.
But I started looking back at CPA, the timing, and, oh, boy, I should have written this down. The timing, I thought, was you have town meeting, it passes, and then I thought there was a, you had to do it within a certain amount of time, but I think there's actually, it's, you have to let a certain amount of time pass so that the timing of annual town meeting and town election wasn't sufficient time to do, to pass an annual town meeting and to have a ballot at the town election. There wasn't sufficient time. I went back to Rebecca Lantry presented, what, 2020, I think it was, right before the world shut down, and Heather was commenting on that timing during that meeting. So it's five years old, so I don't know if the timing has changed.
No.
So that makes me think we, if we're gonna do a CPA, it should go to fall town meeting and then town, annual town election.
I don't think you can do it in the fall, if I remember. Again, I think there's regulation against that, too.
Then the timings all...
I remember seeing that, too.
Yeah, you have to wait.
You have to wait a whole year.
Well, we have to, you have to review it. I mean, the CPA is very, very strict in the guidelines of how it has to get passed. There is really no rules for, you know, there's no guessing. It's really pretty clear. I don't recall it because I haven't worked on it for so long, but they were clear and they were rigid.
So that's an action item, I guess. We need to
Yeah.
Understand the timing, and, and not just the timing, but also whether it can be voted on at a special town meeting or it has to be an annual.
All right, we can look into that.
It's on my to-do list, but it keeps getting...
What, is that the only thing we're looking to do?
Oh, no, there's a lot more around it, right? There's, there's what exemptions you want, what...
No, 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 no. But I'm talking about, other than the CPA.
Yeah.
Okay.
What?
Mike, the reason I'm asking is that we are now, you know, what is today, February 18th?
Eighteenth.
And, you know, so tick-tock, tick-tock, that town, I mean, we have, of course, I know you guys talked about it last week, about the, the school budget and what they are projecting as deficit, and again, the world is blowing up, and we have that, and we have the municipal building, and we have the Marshall Park, and now we have people asking for surcharge on the CPA, and
Yeah.
You know, town meeting is in two months. So...
And the warrant closes in a month.
Well, two and a half months.
And that's another reason why I don't think this, it's a good year for the CPA, you know?
No, no.
There are three things on the warrant, asking for more money. asking for more money and I don't think adding a fourth is really beneficial to any of the causes, so.
No, but I'd like to understand.
And that's without even, and that's without even knowing for those people who live in the water district, what the water district is gonna do with the PFAS treatment. So that's another thing outside of the town, but not outside of the town residents.
And there's also stormwater utility under discussion.
So.
So as if the list wasn't long enough.
All right. My apologies, just taking some notes here. Jen, is there anything else you wanted to add on any of these items?
Uh, the only thing on the CPA that I had kind of tossed around in my head is that, um, where I think probably we don't have time to do it for this May town meeting, but it, there also is a lot of effort that needs to go in. Um, and, and a thought that I had had is if there was a very brief presentation, I know there has been past presentations of the building, uh, building, Budget Task Force at town meeting, but if there was a specific presentation on the CPA element to see if, um, we could generate some folks that want to volunteer for a exploratory committee, CPA exploratory committee that would be ad hoc to the select board, that really could do all of this research work. Um, it, I just pulled up the, um, Division of Local Services Guidelines, there's 75 pages on just CPA. So if, if we could maybe generate some interest at town meeting of folks that maybe would want to be on the committee that really does the deep dive into preparing this for town meeting, that might be the place where we might catch some folks who are looking to volunteer.
I think that's a good idea. What do you guys think? Yeah?
I mean, my only, my only concern is, um, you know, we're struggling already with volunteers. You know, obviously creating a new committee is gonna be challenging, you know, to find those volunteers and I, I'm just wondering out loud if another committee has a charge similar enough that they would have a capability or interest in kind of taking this on.
Your, your natural kind of folks are if you pulled one person from open space, one person from affordable housing, one person from recreation and then maybe two residents. And, and this wouldn't be a committee that would have to, I mean CPA eventually, once adopted, if it were to be adopted, you'd need a committee that would live into perpetuity. But this would be a committee that just would stand up for this purpose of advising and then-
Yeah.
Be done, so perhaps that, that would be another, those three groups plus a couple more or even maybe, maybe just those three.
And the last time it was brought forward, it was brought forward, um, by the Historical Commission.
Yeah, it should be something on-
Oh, Historical Commission, how, yes. My, my apologies to the Historical Commission, you're absolutely correct.
All right. Did you want to update on any other items?
No, no, that was really my only thought on that.
All right, cool. Thank you. Moving on to Municipal Building Design Update. I just added this as an agenda item to see if there are any updates. If not, we can skip over it.
The Municipal Building Design Committee has not met since we last presented to the Select Board. Uh, our meeting is tomorrow evening at 5:30. And the, you know, what we have done or, you know, what's happened between the meeting with the Select Board two weeks ago and today was we started the conversation with the, um, town manager. That was also a discussion with Bond Council, um, the tax collector, our town accountant, to start working on what this is going, how we're gonna borrow, if this passes, how do we borrow the money? How does this fit into the overall picture of our debt schedule? Uh, what is the actual add on the immediate? What is that kind of, you know, as you look out over the life of the, um, bond, you know, what, how much is it costing the average taxpayer? So, you know, we, we just had these conversations last week where, uh, we did receive some preliminary information earlier today, but I think that our expectation is that by March, that we'll have a better picture of kind of how all of that wraps in together. The Municipal Building Design Committee at our meeting tomorrow, we will be working on the presentation for the annual town meeting. Uh, we know that there's a lot of questions that have come up, um, related to the project and, and we knew that on the front end of this anyway, uh, that we need to really invest our energy into what this public presentation is. Some of the ideas that are floating already are to have kind of tours of some of the town buildings to allow people to come and see what these buildings really look like and, and how they operate day to day. Uh, we've also had discussion about community meetings in which we, you know, will have, um, public facing, although all of our meetings are, but specific meetings just on, uh, the design. So I'm expecting that coming out of our meeting tomorrow, we'll have a, a pretty good game plan. Uh, we're also, um, beginning the work on the Brooks House request, um, that came out of the fall town meeting. So, and, and at this point, uh, the update is that things are in motion and that we should have more information. Uh, if we're on the agenda for the first meeting, uh, in March, or if I can give a more detailed update at the first meeting in March, uh, that'd be helpful.
Great, that was, that was gonna ask you.
I will alert the board, I will not be here for the first week in March, I will be away.
Oh, right, you won't be either.
No.
Ooh.
All right, well.
And we should push that to probably the second week of March.
Yep, the 11th. By the way, that's looking like a very heavy meeting. So, which we're about to segue into.
What, the second week? The second week?
Mm-hmm. All right, any other questions on that? All right, moving on to the Budget, Capital Plan and Annual Town Meeting.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I guess I do have a question.
Okay.
I had earlier said that I was gonna have staff provide feedback March 4th. Do you still want that feedback March 4th or do you want to hold that till March 11th?
Are you talking the feedback for?
Staff, staff feedback on the municipal building design.
Yeah, I mean, I think, uh, I think that at this stage, any, any additional feedback that we receive will be incorporated into construction document design phase. Um, so it's not gonna have an impact into this portion. I thought we did a really good job with the staff, but certainly there's going to be additional comments and feedback that, you know, it's an engaged process with the stakeholders until the very end. And so I, I do expect that staff will have additional comments, questions, but I think that they will be captured really, um, if the project is approved and moves forward and as we, you know, begin that design process again, uh, that we would incorporate it again at that time.
Mr. Chair, Ted, in response to the town manager's question, I personally would like the, if they so inclined, I'd like to have it the same day we have the update, so yes.
All right. Budget, Capital Plan, Annual Town Meeting Warrant Articles. So the town manager is going to present the budget she's looking at next Thursday, the 27th, right?
I'm hoping. I'm hoping.
All right, any questions on that?
So because of what's going on with the school, has, is there any inclination in any direction? Because we keep all getting lots of emails from residents, like we did last year. I just wanted to know if, you know, again, as an open point, since we have an agenda item, if, is there any inclination from this board, one way or another, regarding how we're going to approach that?
I mean, my personal opinion is that it's a little too early. We need to see what the budget presentation is like first and then, at least for me, that's when I would be comfortable moving forward with that.
My inclination is, um, I, I largely agree with what the chair just said. I think what I would additionally add is that, you know, I, I, I think that the, you know, we're being campaigned or lobbied at this point, as if we have anything to do with the bottom line of the school budget. I, 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 I think, you know, I do respond to just about all the emails and what I say to most people or I'll call them as I'll say, "Look, you know, the town budget goes up by two and a half percent plus new growth and the general budgeting formula every year is that every department plans for two and a half percent." And it's when you start getting above that, that, that you run into some friction. It's, you know, we had, the comment we heard from the chair of the school committee last week was just blatantly asking for an override. You know, my opinion, I said it last week, is, is I think that, I'm not an educator, but for an educator to look at the full budget and decide that the best way to find money is by cutting special education and early childhood development course teachers, an educator says that that's the best way, not to touch administrative staff, not to touch the district, not to go district wide, but to specifically target special education and teachers and, and early education, that's what the educator has presented as their draft budget. I, it doesn't make any sense to me, but I'm not an educator. I generally support the idea that we need to provide enough funding, uh, to make sure that our school department is functional. But, you know, our role here is, is not to, um, and I've been very vocal and publicly saying that every department in town, um, has over the last 20 years had to manage a 20% increase in customers, meaning residents, whereas the school department, it's not a secret, has had a decrease in, in, in residents or in customers, so to speak, over that same period of time. I think that the school department has a lot to do in terms of explaining how we've gotten to this point. I think that it's clear from what they've said so far, what the, what's driving this number up is, is healthcare, you know, just, just out of school placements that they're driving this cost up. But I think I need more information, so I broadly support the school's request more than I did last year, but I, I really need to see how it all shakes out.
We also tentatively have a joint meeting with the school committee as well, which will be a really good opportunity to, one, have those questions answered as well and just ask any questions, so.
When is that tentative?
Is that planned?
Sorry, why?
Is it planned, is it scheduled?
Not yet, they're gonna discuss it at their next meeting. They could decline the invitation, but.
So we don't even have a tentative meeting, we have the notion of a meeting.
The notion of a tentative meeting, sure.
I mean, I know at the last school committee meeting, when the superintendent presented the budget, the school committee members were, you know, go back to the drawing boards, everything's on the table, rethink the high school schedule and everything and they haven't met since, so I'm sure the superintendent's been working on the budget, but-
She hasn't been, yep.
I don't know what it looks like. I guess school committee meets again next week? I think, not this week, I know.
Uh, I, I will just comment, having not been here last week, being on vacation when, and that was, our next meeting after this superintendent presented the budget to the school committee, that I find it rather shocking. I, I was shocked last year when it came in January that they were a million dollars short. And there was the whole push to get an override. I supported the override. Uh, I also mentioned at that time that there wasn't enough time to plan a comprehensive one and that this was going to be, you know, this was going to be using a lot of political capital with the citizens. And everybody at town, well, not everybody, many people at town meeting asked, "If we give you this, will, will you be coming back next year?" To which the answer was the astounding, "We don't know." So, okay, the town passed it with "I don't know" as the answer. You would think that immediately the FY27 bud, uh, FY26 budget would be worked on in the summer because 3.5 million dollar deficits don't arise out of nowhere. They just don't. Not without an absolute financial crisis like happened in 2008. So where were the eyes on the road? Who was watching the dashboard for this? It, it, it just amazed me as I watched the meeting that last year came in January, that was a million dollars. Here we come in February and it's 3.5. You know, just think about the trajectory for next, what is next year? We'll find out in April that it's 6 million.
I also just want to point out too, that was like the worst case scenario where we lose all federal grants and that's a sizable portion of that deficit too.
Okay, okay, so what was, what was it if we don't? It still was sizable.
Yeah.
It was more than last year.
Yeah, it was two something probably.
Right.
And the number that stuck in everyone's head was the 3.5, 3.6 million dollar deficit.
Exactly, exactly. And, and it was, and, and again, I would love to see a five-year spreadsheet for the last four years and what's projected now with a column that shows what the increases are per line item. Because even the people in the school committee were frustrated that there wasn't any comprehensive way of knowing where all these increases. When, when the superintendent listed all the things that they were gonna be cutting out and says, "Well, these are all facilities and supplies, but we all know that that doesn't really amount to very much. It's all in salary." I'm like, "Well, if it's all in salary, how come you didn't know this last year?" So I was very frustrated by the fact that it came so late and there was no time to really prepare and how somewhat, again, some people pointing to the interim town manager saying, "Well, they limited us to 2.5%." But as the vice chair says, like, "Yeah, that happens every year." Because that's what we get. And I remind people that last year, the school got all the new money that came into the town. Okay? There was no new money spent in the town side of, in police, fire or anything. In fact, we gave up $50,000 of the pavement management plan to fund that budget. So certainly, we were trying to do what we could do. But it really, the, the short timeline to the finish line of town special, of town meeting, annual town meeting, really ties our hands up, it's not a whole lot we can do.
It's also, I think, adding to what you're saying, Mr. Alonso, it's, you know, we keep hearing, and I have said this to members of the school committee, we keep hearing unfunded mandates, unfunded mandates and I think what would be helpful, and I'll say this again, is every time there's a new mandate that comes down, where did it come from and who voted for it? Cause if, if we're getting our, you know, state delegation voting for these unfunded mandates, we need to hold them accountable. If they're coming from DESI, we need to be going to the state and saying, "Where's the money at coming behind this stuff?" Cause, you know, it, it seems as if globally, we're not, this isn't a unique problem to Lunenberg. Um, it's, it's everywhere that's dealing with all of these, um, variables that affect the school budget, you know, but again, we're dealing with a decreasing student body population and it's the one department that is growing at an exponential rate compared to everyone else that has to provide services to an increasing population. And so I think that there's just, yes, it's a moral issue, it's an ethical issue of providing quality education to children. I think we all can get behind the morals and the ethics of it, but it's, but, but the equation here is not, "We're holding back some funds here, we're not giving the school enough." That, that's not what's going on. It's, it's, everyone is in a similar environment in which they have to justify every new dollar that they spend. But again, I'm not an educator, I personally don't understand why a public presentation focused on cutting special education and early childhood, um, teachers unless the intent was to be, uh, make an emotional argument. But it, and I don't understand what other rationales could, there could have been to why that is the best approach, given how strong the reaction is from the residents in town saying, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, you're cutting when the kids need it the most and like that's when they're learning how to read and, and you're cutting the teachers? You want to get class sizes over 30?" Again, it's not our lane, it would just be helpful to, you know, I want to support the schools and providing a quality education to every child. I, I'm not, I want to support that, I need more data to do it. So if you mentioned, Mr. Chair, that, that we've extended, that you've extended an invitation to the school committee, what are those tentative dates that we may be targeting?
Well, that's one of the complications here, cause it was the 11th of March. So now, I mean, if we have all this other stuff, you know, it's gonna be a lot going on there. So I don't know, we'll have to see, maybe it makes sense to move it forward to the 4th if we can. I know we're not gonna have a full board, but I don't know. Because then the, the, unless we want to push it to the 18th.
Can we have a special meeting just on this, cause it's gonna, it's gonna take some time.
I would be willing to do that, absolutely. And I just want to point out, by the way, just to address some of the things you said. I had a conversation with the superintendent and I mentioned to her that we really do need to educate first and foremost this board, because it seems like we have these questions about unfunded mandates and all of that and they're just perpetual questions that never get answered. So I communicated that. And I think it's also helpful to the public too, to know what are these unfunded mandates? It's a buzzword that we always use, be more specific, what does it look like? So that's something that I asked her to be prepared to speak to if we have that meeting.
So a couple of things. One, it looks like school is presenting to FinCom on March 6th. So that's very soon. The other thing is, school committee meets every other week. And I think because of school vacation, this week, I think they're meeting next week. Maybe we could meet on the Wednesday of their off week.
Yep. Right, I know.
Instead of trying to extend our meeting?
They meet on the 21st is the next one that's listed, February 21st.
Well, no, that's a, that's like a special policy commi, that's a Friday, that's not their full school committee.
Aren't we talking February?
Well, next week is the last week of February.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you guys talking February, you guys already in March?
Well.
Cause I thought you said the 21st.
I'm, I'm away for two weeks, so. I, they wouldn't have the agenda up yet for next week, but they must be- They wouldn't have the agenda up yet for next week, but they must be meeting next week, because they didn't meet this week. When was their last meeting?
You know, I don't know if they do have a meeting scheduled for next week.
Yeah, because the 21st is a Friday.
21st is like, if you look at, if you open the agenda for that, it's like some subcommittee.
Booth said, "School committee tomorrow night."
Okay.
Tomorrow?
So they're not meeting next week?
I thought they weren't meeting this week because of school vacation week.
Sounds like they are.
I hear they are, no, the 5th?
Is it posted?
What is today?
Let me look.
Tomorrow's the 19th.
Let me pull it up.
I don't see anything on the 19th.
Yeah, I don't...
All right, I don't know.
Nope. I see no school committee on the 19th, on the...
We're gonna have to coordinate with them anyway, so...
But maybe we can have the joint meeting on their off week, a Wednesday night?
Mm-hmm.
Because generally, Wednesdays should be, you know, open for them. I think Wednesday's for us, now the Capitol planning is done, right?
No, there's, yeah, there's no Capitol.
So maybe that, an off week...
We're designing for Mondays, but it's only because of the holiday that we're pushing for.
Yeah, so Wednesdays sound like it's usually pretty open for most people, I think.
Yep. All right, we can see if...
But I don't know that we can, I mean, if they're presenting to FinCom on March 6th, they're gonna have one meeting before that? We won't be able to have a joint meeting? Not that, I mean, not that we have to, but I don't know, the timing is, timing is tough.
All right. Well, we'll try to see if we can get it scheduled. All right, let's move on to the warrant. So this is another challenging topic with the timeline that we really need to be prepared for. So we need to have our votes by March 11th, so that leaves tonight, don't have a full board, March 4th, we're not gonna have a full board, particularly for voting on recommendations. So it looks like we might have to do all of that on March 11th.
Aside from listening last week to the meeting, where they were, the articles were discussed, I haven't even seen, even in...
Yeah, so...
Just draft form, what they look like.
The first reason I bring this up is to say that we have to do our work and really read the warrant, so that in order to make a decision on whether we support them, it's not having several meetings' worth of discussions, it's reading it, identifying what we need, and being a little more proactive about that than what we normally do. That's first and foremost. Other than that, I mean, we're already talking about special meetings, we could set a meeting aside just to review the warrant, that's a possibility, again.
Did you say the 18th? Did I hear that correctly?
For what? I don't think I've said the 18th for anything.
Well, the 11th.
11th.
We have to have...
The warrant...
Well, I'm sorry. I'm just a little confused. So you said the 11th is when we need to have the votes in, so that way we can have that decided prior to the warrant closing?
Till the warrant being printed.
This is the timeline that we all reviewed and agreed upon.
No, no.
If we want to adjust it, we can, but...
I don't, I'm not disagreeing with the timeline. I think, I think that what is usual is that the warrant closes, everything gets submitted, and then we decide what our recommendations are with the full context. So I would urge that we consider the 18th as a real possibility, because on the 11th, a warrant can still come in. Are you saying that you'd rather we take the approach of get everything done before the warrant closes?
This isn't the first time we discussed this.
I, I'm aware of that.
Coming out of a special town meeting, so I guess I'm confused then.
What are you confused by? I think I was...
Coming out of a special town meeting, we had several conversations about how we wanted to start reviewing them and making recommendations and doing it over several meetings.
Yep.
We're realizing that we're not gonna be able to do that, given the timeline that we currently have. So I'm just presenting this and letting the board be aware that with the timeline that we currently have, it's set for March 11th. If we want to vote after that, that's fine, as long as it gets done, as long as it gets done before it goes to the printer.
Do we have, is the printer date on the calendar?
Yeah, when does it go?
It is, yeah.
April 3rd is the printer date.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, that doesn't really change much, right, in the print, it's just capturing those votes. You know, a lot of the articles are, if you want to do it piecemeal, that's, I don't know what your culture or tradition is to do it, whether you're doing it as Article 1, A to Z, or if you want to, there are some that are standard articles that you can probably make votes on easier than others without a lot of dialogue. Bills from a prior fiscal year, we may not like why we have bills, but we still need to pay them, right?
The, I will, I will attempt to explain some of the culture. So anything that has a dollar amount, that doesn't have a dollar amount, we won't, I don't know, I don't want to speak for the rest of the board, but traditionally, we won't take a vote. If it says a bill from a prior year and it's a placeholder, and we don't know if there's any, we're not gonna approve it or not. So if there is an article that requires a number, but the number hasn't been finally determined, we won't take a vote. So some of those are for obvious reasons. Anything that doesn't, anything that's policy, anything that's bylaw or something like that, we certainly can discuss whenever, as long as the final wording is there. And we usually do do it over at least two meetings, sometimes three.
Yep.
But as the chair said, with people being out, it's gonna be tricky, but if, you know, if we're looking at April 3rd for the printing, certainly April, March 18th is not out of the question to finish it. That gives us, last, you know, special town meeting, it was like, it had to be in Wednesday morning, and we were voting on it on a Tuesday night, which caused lots of problems.
That's why I bring it up now, so we are all aware of that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Usual delays are not, I would say, they're not from the board, it's not like the board's delaying and making the decision. I think that we've provided maximum flexibility to everyone submitting an article, to people who do placeholders, to get revised languages, and that takes the longest, and really what's taken the longest amount of time has come from the town manager and those numbers. And so we don't have, usually that's the reason for the delay. The board, I find, has been, they usually roll in pretty quick as they come in, and we usually discuss them as they come in. So I think there's usually visibility over what's happening, so that way it's easier to make the decision. But I don't, I don't see the board as a sticking point in the process, as much as it's usually the... And then if we want to meet with the board, like, the planning board, if they have a link to the article...
Right, I was about to say that. If there's, if there's an article submitted by other boards, we should get them to present here.
I was gonna bring that up as well. We were looking for the 4th, but now with only three members, maybe we should just...
Well, you could, I mean, I'll watch the recording.
I'll watch it.
Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll watch it later, I won't watch it live, but I...
All right, so we'll stick to the 4th, but yeah, we do want to bring in someone to explain the planning and...
So I think it's important for the board to understand it, but presentations here is exactly, is equally important for the public to be aware of it.
For sure, yep.
And we also have a consent calendar that we usually...
Yeah, that's another thing.
Put together.
Yeah, we normally decide that, like, afterwards, though, so...
Yep, yeah, I think she was just saying that for the town manager.
Yeah, and...
How full.
I mean, we can't vote on an article until it's in its final form, so if there are some that are finalized by March 11th, fine, we can vote.
Yep.
But the warrant doesn't close until the 18th, so it's possible that there are some placeholders in there, the wording will change or whatnot, then we vote after.
But the earliest we can get even a draft in the Google Drive or whatever drive we're gonna use, so I, you know, we can familiarize ourselves with what's even there.
So there is a draft in last week's, if you want to just kind of...
Okay.
Review, yeah.
Okay.
And if we have to have an extra meeting at the end of March, I mean...
Yeah.
So be it.
All right, any other discussion on any of these items? All right, moving on to our press release. So we went through this the first time last week, I wanted to hold off on voting on it, Tom, because I wanted to get your feedback on it, too.
I appreciate that, and I...
You're welcome.
I said that to the recording as I was listening to it, thank you.
Oh.
You probably didn't hear me.
I did not.
But yeah, I reviewed it, it looks fine with me.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any wordsmithing or anything, I know that there was some comment about that, but...
Why are you looking over here?
I wasn't looking over there. Wow. But you're not the one who said it, I think the chair's the one who said, no, I think the chair's the one who said it.
I, Michael Ray said wordsmithing, I think I called you linguistically opinionated.
So, but anyway, I think it's fine.
All right.
I just noticed a couple of things that might be nitpicky, but on page four, the munis and web deployment, that really should be cloud deployment, right?
Well, munis and the cloud.
Well, it says munis and web deployment, but, and then, I think it's the last page, village of flat hills, not hills.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I just noticed those as I was...
Wow, even I didn't find two comments like that.
Yeah, I was a little under the weather last week.
I feel like I'm underperforming now.
All right, I can make those updates and send it over, and we can get it out.
Wonderful. So this will go in the ledger?
Yeah, so we'll post it on the town Facebook page, we can put it out to the ledger.
And the town website, too, right?
Yep, town website. It's probably really it, unless I'm missing something here.
Yeah, that's it.
Do you want to post it like at the library and adult activity center or anything like that?
Telephone poles around town?
Well, I don't know, you might want to stay clear of that one. All right, awesome. Do we need a vote on this? I don't care if we do, either way.
I'll move that we approve the opera press release with revisions as discussed.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, no.
Just for the record, Mr. Chair, why not have a vote?
Sure, why not? My computer just shut off, I don't know what happened, so, PAC is still going, so that's fine, but I am no longer Zoom, as in FYI.
Can I touch something?
I don't know, maybe.
No, you still have power, so...
All right. Moving on, minutes, we have four sets of minutes, I believe, January 15th, 2025, January 21st, 2025, February 4th, 2025, and February 11th, 2025.
So, Mr. Chairman, the January 21st meeting minutes were already approved on February 4th?
Gotcha. I was gonna say, I recall seeing three, so...
So it's just those three.
So I need a little more time. I usually set aside time on the weekends to review, and the minutes were not in the folder then, and so if I can just get another week to take a look, that'd be helpful.
All right, that's fine. Do we want to just wait until next week, then?
Well, until, there's nothing next week.
Or, you're right.
The 4th, yeah.
My apologies.
That's okay.
All right. Sorry, I'm multitasking here, trying to get back on Zoom, too. And, all right, cool. Back on here. I just want to make sure I'm on here for public comment. Warrants, we do have some warrants. We have an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $408,887.23. And action items, I did create the action item tracker.
Thank you.
And it is in the drive, which we can go over in a second, but are there any new action items that we want to mention? Tracking the CPA, so I'll add that, and I think that was it that we've discussed so far during the meeting.
So can you just tell me where they're at in the drive?
Yep, so if you go to the root folder...
All right.
And it is listed as action item tracker. So just going through it, board-specific handbooks, so it's something that I'm working on for the select board, I have pretty much an outline of all the topics that I will write about, and Jen, do you want to speak to how we want to handle this for other boards and committees?
I think that what we should probably do is put together a memo to the chairs, what we're seeking to accomplish. I think this is probably a long-term project that will take maybe upwards of a year for folks to really codify all of their different policies, if we're really getting granular with the planning board processes in one handbook and CONCOM processes, so, but communicate what the objectives are and get feedback of how they would like to participate.
All right, sounds good. And then the second one is the state of the organization, which Tom requested back in August, it looks like.
Yeah, I've...
Do you want to speak to what exactly you're looking for in that? What is...
Well, there's two things that I asked for, one was even earlier than August, I think, and I've spoken with the town manager about this. So the organizational chart is that we have a visible organizational chart, and each of the, each of the elements of the chart is a job that is tagged with a job description, so that when somebody leaves or retires or whatever, that we're not, we know exactly what the job description is, there's no preparation, you've just got to post it, the only preparation is just where are we gonna post it? And that, you know, we have an active, current job description for everybody, and who that position reports to, et cetera, and that each department should do. The thing I asked for prior to that was for the HR director, in the light of some of the exodus we saw from our town staff, is to give us a report about what her recommended, like, what is her analysis of that? Why were people leaving? Did she have exit interviews, and could she summarize for the board? Now, that's obviously kind of slowing to crawl back to normal, but it would be nice, in the moment, to know what that analysis was and what potential recommendations could be provided. That is what I asked for.
Sorry, I'm just capturing some of those notes.
While you're typing, so I did, I did talk to Mr. Alonso about this over the weekend a little bit, and I had a conversation so that I could understand what he was looking for with the assistant town manager today, and we had talked about, she originally thought it was something a little bit different, but I said really to what you had just said, that point, and that we should really start 2003, 2000, I mean, 2003, 2023, 2024, I think much earlier than that, you're gonna have, the data's really stale, but just these past two years, and to quantify the number of people that have left the organization, how many were due to retirements, and then how many were due to terminations, and then for the remainder that weren't due to retirement or terminations, to really capture from those exit interviews what the driving factors were for separation.
Right, thank you. That's exactly it.
All right, thank you, Jen. Organize and purge the shared drive, so it's something that I've started to at least think about. I'm going through all the documents that we have in there, some of which are very old, and just thinking about better ways to organize that, so that's just gonna be another ongoing thing.
And then to follow up on this one, there had been conversation about moving from the Google Drive to the OneDrive, so we have been dropping information in both drives, and I just wanted to see if we are ready to cease using the Google Drive and move over to the OneDrive, or if folks still need time to make the full transition.
I think we're ready on our side.
Okay. So all the legacy will be moved over, to all the historical documents will be moved over?
It's already in there, in that huge zip folder. The very first one, when you opened the OneDrive, I actually talked about, we can just get rid of that folder and just have that live in the front, and maybe pin 2025 meetings, if it's possible, to the top, because that's what you're mostly going in there for.
I would, I, so I'm a rip-the-band-aid-off kind of person, so I think we should do it, but as soon as it's done, before you remove the Google Drive, get a return receipt requested from everybody, and saying, and there are various things, "Can you access this?" Get them to reply, "Can you access this?"
Okay.
All right. Tax investigation report, where are we on that?
Yeah, this is way overdue. Why don't we schedule it for the 18th of March?
18th of March?
And I will commit to getting it to the board the week before.
All right. Workplace survey questions, have we been able to find any of those?
So I, again, I talked to the assistant town manager today. I think you were looking for, from what I understand, just the list of questions?
No.
No, the list of questions that were given out at the last, the last survey, no?
No. There was two parts to this. So the, the main request, and it's well before January the 1st, the main request is what were the full results? So I think that, you know, we only received, you know, what we got recently, those kind of summarized view. And, and I think we asked for the full report. So that was one thing. The other thing was I had asked what the draft questions that were presented by the company were versus the questions that were actually sent to the, to the staff. And I think that what it seems, and you know, there's an opinion here, is it's really challenging getting this information. And it kind of goes back to Mr. Alonso's request over the summer, which I thought the state of the organization request was even before August. But I, but I think that it's just, it's difficult. You know, we know that certain activities are happening. We know that exit interviews are occurring. We know that largely that's in the town manager lane, right? But I think it's just getting some kind of summarized result from some of this stuff would be helpful. And I think similarly with the workplace survey questions, it's understanding, you know, what were the, you know, we had questions about like, as we looked at those summaries, it was the use of the word leader instead of like town manager instead of select board. And I'm just curious as to whether that was a staff decision to remove the word town manager and select board and replace it with leadership for my own information. But I, so I think that that's why I'm asking, what were the draft questions versus what was, what were asked? It also would help feed into when we came up with a policy, what are some of these questions that we want to kind of remain as kind of core? But again, it's the results that came out of it is really what we'd like. And I mean, you know, this is, this was done three years ago, I believe, three years ago. So it would be helpful.
All right. And the last one is the meeting room temperature.
I think that was, that was resolved. And I don't, and I don't think.
As of the last meeting, we were still complaining about it.
No, it's cold. But I, I think the answer that, the answer that we got was that the, the building's not on a timer.
Right.
That it's just, we know that there's limited insulation in these walls, there's limited insulation in the attic. And it's just as the night gets colder, it just gets colder in here, too. So I don't know if that was really an action item.
Well, we were talking about it as an action item for like three meetings.
I will say that it never used to be like, I mean, I, I don't mind this temperature right here, but I know my colleagues do. And it has markedly changed. So the building hasn't changed in three years, so I don't know why the temperature has changed. Something has changed.
So I can certainly talk to the fire chief about whether or not we could get some ancillary heating devices. I mean, I'm, I am cold right now, so.
The temperature now isn't bad. It's not bad right now. It's an hour from now.
That's because, that's because our thermals are on, I'm sure.
No, but usually my hands get really cold.
Yeah, it usually doesn't start kicking in until about nine is what.
Well, and all my point was is that it never used to be like this. I've been on the board for a long time and even last year, nobody complained.
Last year, I don't remember it being.
Right. It just, it is markedly colder this year than it was in the past. And yeah, I understand our January was colder, but you know, it's, that's not what's causing this. There's a reason why it's colder.
Right. Said it wasn't an action item, but that was the most discussion out of all of them. All right, anything else you want to add? All right.
Well, I mean, I don't, I, I, I think I spoke to it, Caesar, but I, I think Amanda actually brought this one up, not me. And I just added on to it, but.
Oh, okay. All right, moving on, any committee reports tonight?
I have, I have two. So prior to this meeting, we held a meeting of the finance committee appointment committee, which was duly posted with the Zoom link. The Zoom link was on the meeting. We interviewed two people. One was unable and we did not know why they were unable to make it, but we know that the FinCom needs these seats filled. And we had two ready people. So we did appoint Anna Lockwood and Michael Rupp to the FinCom. And we told them to, you know, get sworn in for their next meeting, which hopefully they'll be able to attend on Thursday. Second, tomorrow, I am meeting with the principal assessor, Mr. Rabbit from the Board of Assessors, Lou Franco and myself, to discuss the mechanics of implementing the senior tax abatements that was passed in legislation at the beginning of this year. So they, they invited Lou and I because we worked on it. And so we will be meeting, start, it'll be probably a series of meetings and hopefully be done by town meeting to create a process, how this will work and what seniors have to do so it can be clearly conveyed to them for next tax year. And that's tomorrow at, I believe, 5:30 to 6:30.
Minister.
Can anybody, can anybody hear me?
We can, but we.
I just, I, I know, I just want you to know that you actually made me host and kicked yourself out.
Me what?
I don't see how. I don't know how you're the host.
I don't know what you did, but you pushed some button wrong, but I just wanted to interject so you could fix it.
Well, thank you, but I'm not even, my computer just shut down again, so I can't do anything about that. I don't, I would say just wield your host powers responsibly. We're almost done with the meeting.
I'm most certainly well. I just thought I would give you a fair warning.
All right, thank you.
Yes, with, with great power comes great responsibility.
Absolutely. And just so you know, I do have a public comment, that comment when it's my turn.
All right. Well, I don't have a committee report. Upcoming meetings, we are meeting March 4th and March 11th. Are there any public comments from the town manager?
I have none.
Any public comment from the public?
Okay, now I'll unmute myself. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's John Bowen, 162 Island Street. That was highly unusual. In any case, I just wanted to make a comment about what the federal money is that the students are getting across Massachusetts for the last fiscal year is $2,120 per pupil. Now, out of that, $2,120 per pupil, if we apply that to what we're working with here in town, and there is a cost increase of which we're talking here over a million dollars again, which last year I said was going to happen, we have to have some, I guess we have to take manageability with maintaining the integrity of the voting operation that went on at town hall. Now, I, I, I'm all for 100% of helping the schools, but I believe that where, and people come in and they just pick a time when they want to vote and then they leave, you know, that's, that, or hand their clicker to somebody else and it not being monitored, is definitely an election interference issue. And I think that the select board should address that. And that's all I'm asking is that the select board actually address the election interference issues that happened at the last town meeting with people handing their clickers off to other people and people just showing up for a vote on one item and not participating in the process. I think our democracy only works well when people show up and participate, not when they show up for what they want. That's not democracy, that's fascism. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bowen. Any other public comments from the public?
Nope.
Just so you know, I see nobody on Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. Any public comment from the board?
No.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed, no. The motion passes unanimously. It is 8:19 PM. The select board is adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.